Tamco Building Products, Joplin's hometown family company since 1944.
Hello and welcome to Candidate Connection. I'm Judy Stiles and we are coming to you live from Corley Auditorium at Missouri Southern State University. And this is the program featuring the Joplin City Council candidates who are on the April 5th ballot. We're going to begin this evening with comments from our sponsors, co-sponsors, The Joplin Globe and the publisher of The Globe, Michael Beatty.
Thank you. Thank you for attending and thank you for viewing tonight. I also want to thank Tamco for being our sponsor. So, thank you very much. And lastly, I always think it's important to start off and talk a little bit about how the national elections have gotten the attention of all of us. But really, when it gets down to it, it's our local elections that really count. When you go to the vote Tuesday, April 5th, you will be voting for some of the most important things that'll affect our lives. You'll be voting for the school board members, you're going to be voting for the city council members and other issues. So, please come out and vote on April 5th. Encourage your friends, your family, and all your neighbors to do so because when you vote on Tuesday, April 5th, it'll be the election that will matter to us the most, the things that affect us here in Joplin. So, with that said, I will turn the microphone over to Carol Stark, the editor of The Joplin Globe.
Hi. Thank you so much for coming out. I've told each of the candidates here tonight, it's going to be fast and furious. I want to introduce, we have three panelists here tonight. They have, we have determined the questions in advance. None of the candidates know what those questions are. I have Kristi Spencer with us. Kristi is the news director at KOAM-TV. I have Kent Blanchard. Kent is the VP of Roofing Manufacturing for Tamco. And Susan Redden, who is our county government reporter, she also covers local politics. And she was a former, longtime city government reporter for the city of Joplin. Anyway, we think that tonight will maybe open some eyes to some different issues that are out there. Hopefully, when you go to the polls next, on April 5th, you will have a better idea of where to put your check mark. So, thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you. We will begin this evening, our candidates have an opportunity, we've given them one minute each to make an opening statement, introduce themselves to you, and explain to you why they would like to be on the Joplin City Council. So, I'm going to start to my far left with Mr. McCreary.
Thank you. My name's Dan McCreary and I'm running for the two-year general council seat. Last year, a councilman resigned, leaving an opening, and I was, put my name in the hat with around 10 other candidates and was selected to serve until April 5th. And then, I'm going to run for that, I'm actually running unopposed, but I'm happy to be here tonight with the other candidates. And that's who I am, Dan McCreary. And I've lived in Joplin since 1981, married, have three kids that have all graduated from Joplin High School. And they are all, as of May, will be graduated from college. So, I've mailed off my last tuition check. Very excited about that.
Hi. My name is Taylor Brown and I am running for a four-year general seat on the Joplin City Council. Whenever I'm asked why I'm running for city council, I always tell people why I'm not running for city council. I don't have an actogram. I don't have a personal agenda. There's nobody I'm angry at. I just want to get involved in my city. I work for an organization called Christ and Youth where we call students to be involved in their communities as servant leaders. If I'm going to stand on a stage and challenge students to get involved in their communities, I think I should be walking the walk. So, I wanted to dive into the community. I want to have a level head, a listening ear, open mind, and give it my absolute best and serve my community. My wife is here and she's gorgeous and I love her to death and she was super supportive of me jumping into this. And we don't have any children yet, but we would like to raise a family in Joplin. And right now, we're just busy with our Chihuahua Edgar.
Good evening. I'm Bill Goodwin. I'm a lifelong resident of Joplin. I have a beautiful wife and six kids, so I've been busier than you've been. And I've still got a little while before they're all paid off. I retired from the city of Joplin as the Assistant Chief in 2008 from the police department. And I'm currently employed at Downstream Casino as the Director of Security. The reason I wanted to run for the city council is, I've actually talked about this for years. This is something I've wanted to do for years. Joplin's my home. I've traveled all over this country. I love Joplin. And what happened after the 2011 tornado is a great example of why. I mean, Joplin pulled together, Joplin took care of business. There was nobody standing here with their hand out wanting anything. We got together literally, physically, and took care of Joplin. So, it's a great, great place to live and I just want to give something back to Joplin. I've held actually three positions in Joplin, which most people don't know. I worked for the Health Department, was my first position, and I ran out of time, so.
(laughing) Okay, more of that.
All right. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Harvey Hutchinson, seeking one of the general seats as well. First of all, I do want to thank the KCGS for putting us on The Joplin Globe and the very civic-minded Tamco for sponsoring me and even providing one of the panel members. I'm seeking this office because I care deeply about this city. I'm presently serving on the Parks and Rec Board, so I understand a lot about the quality of life and how important that is to recruiting business. I also serve on the Capital Taxes Oversight Safety Board. And I see firsthand what a great, wonderful police, fire, and other first responders team we have and our public, we have the best employees there are. They're highly educated, well-trained, but they need our backs. They need us to stand behind them and that's what I intend to do. That's why I was on those boards and I want to be on the city council to continue that, to be sure that they are taken care of. I think the most significant event that's come to this city so far has been the new medical school. And those that put that together, I'm all in for it and I think that's going to reap dividends for the next hundred years. The most important thing that any legal business, that any organization does, any government of any, is to provide the safety and security of its citizens. That's why I think that the most important thing that we can do right now is to stand behind our first responders, police, and fire. And I'm out of time.
Good evening. My name is David Pryor. I'm a first-time counsel, candidate counsel. I'm a 43-year resident of the city of Joplin, 1988 graduate of Joplin High School. I have two wonderful children that attend Joplin schools, Christopher and Natalie. I'm currently the Sales Manager at Missouri Eagle. Been there for 23 years throughout my working career. I'd like to just take the opportunity to serve the citizens of Joplin and to continue Joplin's growth and continue the good things, the good things that the city has continued to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jim West. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Joplin. And I'm totally engaged in the city and in the citizens of our city. I was born and raised in Joplin, attended Joplin Public Schools, graduated, attend Missouri Southern University Police Academy. I was a Joplin police officer for several years and I have retired. And therefore, I decided to run for council again to get back involved in the city. I think several things have been done well, as Mr. Goodwin mentioned, the fact that we have redeveloped Joplin after the tornado. This was tragic. This was tragic on me. It hurt my soul to see our city tore up like this, but we're doing well and putting it back together. And I want to get back on the council to continue that, that growth in the city and bring integrity and honesty back to the citizens of Joplin. Thank you.
Thank you. And as was explained at the beginning of the program, our media panelists will be asking the questions. Each candidate has one minute for response. We do have a timekeeper, so they will see a sign that says when time is up. So, with that, Kristi Spencer will have the first question and we're going to start at this end this time, so Mr. West can start with the answers.
If you are elected, how will you prepare yourself to be an effective member of the city council? What will you read, study, and review before taking office?
Well, if elected, since I stepped off the council now, I believe each council member receives an iPad with information on it. So, I think it's most important that you read your council information, study the issues, go out and see what's on it. If they're talking about redevelopment or zoning, go out and look it over and get a feel of what is going on out there, what they're asking for. Talk to the neighbors. Therefore, you will be very fluent on what they're talking about, so when it comes to the council table, you will be able to talk and ask questions and get the right answer for them because it's important that you come prepared to the council meeting. It's inevitable you do that and that's what I will do. I will be totally prepared for each meeting.
Pass the mic on to Mr. Pryor.
Yes, I would also review all the pertinent information, take the steps to evaluate any of the questions and the information that was given as far as what is coming up on the council, whether it's the council packet as far as any information and be ready for the upcoming meetings. Thank you.
In the big picture, I've been preparing myself the whole time. That's why I've served on these boards. And I see a couple of councilmen sitting in the audience. They know I'm at almost every meeting as it is. I live and breathe every word of this that I possibly can't absorb it like a sponge. But yes, for the individual meetings, I would get my download of the upcoming agenda and the pertinent materials on Thursday. Have them memorized before Monday night and if it involves property or going to look at it, I'd get in my car and go out and drive and take a check on it and be sure exactly what I was doing and perhaps even bum around and see what the citizens in that area might be thinking about it.
In my opinion, there are two.
Go ahead. I think you've turned up.
There are two keys here, one of which is to talk to the public, get out into the public and see what they think. Since I've started this process, I've heard a lot from the public about what they want, what they like to see. So, that would be one of the key factors. And then, the other obviously is preparing for the meeting. There's so much material that it's got to be very hard to absorb, so you're going to have to be all in. If you want to do this, you've got to be all in. You've got to read all the material that's out there, prepare yourself, and go out and look around and see these projects and what the meeting is going to be about.
Mr. Brown?
Just with my campaign, one of my biggest goals has been to, this past Friday, I wrote along with the fire department to learn what we're able to do for the fire department. I have met with city staff, city managers, I have met with house owners. I have met with individuals from the university. I have explored and learned a lot from them. The way I have started my campaign is to, I'm very aware of the law, of the state, of the state of Joplin. That is how I have gone on, talking to the public, talking, hearing from them, so we've got that, and then we podcast, so we can help, so we can read the books of the local cities, join the work, and we're sure that we're expecting. And I will obviously also be able to do every kind of thing.
Okay. Mr. McCreary.
Well, I think the key is just the realization of being on council for a month and that I don't have all the answers.
Does that work?
Yeah. I was about to think of it works, let's give it here.
Okay. So, but the key is not being afraid to ask the tough questions. And, you know, I kind of started my preparation to be on council by taking the eight-week Citizens Academy where we got to meet with all the different department heads, which I thought was a great program put on by our Assistant City Manager, Brian Kelly. The good news for all the candidates up here is that the city manager does hold an orientation for new candidates. I've already reached out to him when I saw that he was going to have that and said, hey, I know I'm not brand-new, but I would still love to be a part of that new orientation. And everybody has mentioned the Thursday homework. I'm excited to be here. I graduated from Missouri Southern. I didn't always love doing my homework, but for some reason, I get excited to get the packet on Thursday and do my homework. So, that's how I'll prepare.
Okay. Well, we apologize for the audio problems, but I think it would just make sure you put it close enough while you're talking and now we have the levels. So, moving along, Kent Blanchard, and we'll direct this question. We'll go back the other direction, but we'll start with Mr. Brown this time and move around that way.
Okay. What do you think are the responsibilities and duties of the city council?
I think the primary responsibility for the city council is to work as a team. I think one of the biggest issues we've seen in the past is when people operate in silos. That's not healthy on any team and any business and it's not healthy for a city. I think my main responsibility will be to work with council, but also with other entities in the city, to be listening to what the university needs from the city, to be listening to what the chamber needs, to be listening to what the citizens need.
The primary responsibility is to have the public, as I said before, to represent the citizens of Joplin.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and pass this mic all the way down because I think that other one seems to be cutting out, so we'll just use one mic and pass it along. So, Mr. Goodwin.
Nothing's working very well for me, anyway.
No, I think that one's working. They just didn't have it turned up.
I think the primary responsibility of the city council is to represent the citizens and the community. That's the sole purpose of the city council. It kind of goes back to the last question about time, too. One of the things that's come up since I started this process is questions about the council and the public and there's so much material that the council has to cover. I mean, it's an unbelievable amount of material and sometimes you can't communicate that very well to the public, so they think that you're not paying attention to them or doing something outside of what they want. So, there's a big communication piece in there. So, we need to represent the public and we need to communicate to them very well what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Okay. Thank you. And we will move on to Mr. Hutchinson.
Okay. The most important thing, yes, we serve and that's what it is. It's basically a volunteer job. We serve the citizens. And what we're doing, we're standing behind that organization that provides the two most important things to this community. That's economic growth. I see Mr. O'Brien here. We have to interwoven of the quality of life, connect the culture, those kind of people, our sports and all these things to bring industry in. We need industry very, very badly. The other thing is safety and security. Believe me, we could easily have another Brussels or another Ferguson right here. We need to take care of our police. They're the best in the world and they need standing behind and we need the resources there, behind them, to make sure that they're safe and their retirement's safe and they can do their job for us.
Mr. Pryor.
Yes, the duties of the city council, I agree, are very, very open dialogues with the citizens of the city and keeping an open dialogue between the citizens and the council to where issues can be discussed without any issues and keeping that very open to where everybody does understand what is going on within the city. You know, and I think that there's being good stewards of the citizens' money, watching the budgets, and things of that nature. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Thank you. I think the most important part about being a council member is the citizens of Joplin, responsibility to the citizens of Joplin, to the voting taxpayers. They're the ones who elected to the city council. And we must be honest and straightforward with them if there's an issue that they come up with. And I think that serving the public is most important. I've enjoyed serving the public. That's why I'm engaged with the city. And it's true, economic development is most important, but the public is what we need to stand with. And all the council members need to work together as one and stay accord till the public can believe in us and trust in us, and that's where I stand on that issue.
And Mr. McCreary. We'll see if we've got a new microphone. This one should work for you.
Perfect. Yeah. So, I think Taylor mentioned it, starting with an open mind, I think is a great place to start. I do think we represent the citizens and I would also say that that's an honor and a privilege to be able to do that. So, it's important to listen to them, provide some leadership. You know, if you're going to show up on Monday, you're going to vote on issues that you've studied, that you know about. And the other thing I like, when the Citizens Academy passed out the organizational chart and people sometimes say, well, the citizens or the council. Well, all the council are citizens. You know, if you look at the organizational chart of the city of Joplin, at the very top are the citizens and that's the way it should be. So, if we're lucky enough to get elected, we're going to take it to motion and become council members. But we're citizens first and that's the most important thing and it truly is an honor and a privilege to serve.
Thank you. Susan Redden has our next question and for our media panelists, if you feel you need to repeat the question because we have six people answering, please feel free to do so. So, Susan and Mr. Goodwin will answer this one first.
Members of the city council are the direct supervisors of the city manager, the city clerk, city attorney, the public defender, and the municipal judge. What credentials, training, and experience will qualify you to serve as their bosses, especially when it comes to evaluating their performance?
Repeat the question? Okay. Repeat the question one more time. And go ahead and move a microphone closer to you this time, so we can, I think that other one. Okay. Repeat it one more time, please.
As city council members, you are the direct supervisors of the city clerk, the city manager, the city attorney, public defender, and the municipal judge. What credentials, training, and experience will qualify you to serve as their bosses, especially when it comes to evaluating their performance?
During my career, before I retired from the city, I was in an executive level position. I'm also in an executive level position now, so I have direct reports to me. Right now, I have a neighborhood of 80 direct reports. So, I have experience in budgeting. I have experience in anything to do with the executive level of an organization. I also have a fairly good understanding of the city and the city operations, having been there for as long as I was. So, okay.
Mr. Hutchinson.
Education-wise, I have a degree in management marketing and for the last 40 years, I've run businesses all over this country at the executive level. I'm the CEO of a company called Arbida Technologies right now. We're international business consultants. I travel, I work, I know everything going on around and I feel like, and I, most immediately, I've served on those two boards, so I know the ins and outs and the nuts and bolts of the city insofar as both the manager, the public defender, the city attorney, and the whole works and not all intertwined and works together.
Mr. Pryor.
Yes. In my current role at Missouri Eagle, I am in upper management and I do have experience with reporting, whether it's advancement, disciplinary actions, or anything of that nature. And I have to make those reports and fill out some budgetary things as well, so I feel like I've got qualifications that we can move forward and take care of any issues. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Thank you. I've had previous experience on the council and I'm aware that the department heads that the city council is over, so therefore, you have to be cautious in how you handle those issues. And I think one of the things about it, I remember we had an issue where we lost several million dollars and I was on the council at that time that we was able to negotiate, put that back into the city's treasury. So, we've had some rough times there, but I think in operating of the city and working with the city budget, I do have some experience in that and I've enjoyed it.
Now, if you'll pass the microphone down to the other end for Mr. McCreary, you'll have to pass the mic along and then be Mr. McCreary and Mr. Brown.
Well, I'll start with, I don't really like the question, sorry. But, you know, I don't know that we're actually a direct supervisor of all those folks. I wouldn't feel comfortable calling them municipal judge and telling them I was his direct supervisor. I do feel comfortable and I think communication is key in the role of city councilman. I think it's key working with the city manager. And I think that we're fortunate to have a talented, committed, dedicated city manager that, you know, understands what he's doing. He understands his people. He understands his relationship with the council. And so, that's my problem with the question. But, so I think the direct supervisor of the city manager, I go with and, you know, we have communication with the city clerk and we're fortunate to have an outstanding city clerk as well, so.
And Mr. Brown.
I am the director at a nonprofit here in town called Christ and Youth. I have never micromanaged. I lead a team and we reach about 10,000 people across the country and I can't be at all those locations. I have to trust the people that work for me. And I won't micromanage the city staff or any of those areas. What I do have is skills in budgeting and running, developing a product with a very tight budget, leading teams and guiding people in one common direction, logistics and thinking through very difficult problems and creating solutions. And like I said, creating a product that we support with customer service. What I will expect from city staff is that we offer the citizens of Joplin good customer service and that is how I will lead.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Kristi Spencer and it'll start with Mr. Hutchinson. So, Kristi.
What do you think are the city's biggest successes and biggest failures in responding and leading Joplin following the May 2011 tornado?
The greatest success is to get that medical school in here. I know that had actually messed a little before the tornado. Now, the biggest failure obviously has been the master development and I railed against that two years ago right here and I couldn't figure out whether I was being laughed at, scoffed at, or ignored. But at the end of the day, I said they would work on it till the cows came home. Well, the cows were all dead on arrival. Now, they're all bankrupt. So, that's been the biggest failure and we're stuck with $5 million worth of land that's overvalued and we've got to figure out what to do with it. The net result there is there's going to be scores of lawyers work on it for scores of years to come. So, that's been the biggest failure. However, the business people have been, when they're rebuilding, when they've rebuilt some of the property developments and some of the housing, when it wasn't anything to do with the city, when they stuck to where they should have stuck to the infrastructure, that's been successful.
Mr. Pryor. Just keep moving along this way, to the right.
I would have to say the success to me would be the amount of business development that's come on the local level with, without, oh, I want to say, small business development and things of that nature that have grown without a lot of help, the people that have opened up their businesses and come back to Joplin and taken pride in the city and rebuilt. I would say that, you know, failure, I don't, you know, I've read and seen what the master developer issues are, but as far as failure, I would like to focus on successes rather than any of the failures going forward.
Okay. Mr. West.
Thank you. I think some successes are, as I've said, businesses returning to Joplin. And I understand, we all know that the small businessman is the backbone of this city. Without the small business owners, you know, this city will not grow. It's going to continue to grow and I think it's good that we're doing that. The area where the tornado was is being redeveloped. I mean, we have a lot of new houses going up and new people moving in, new businesses is coming and employment in Joplin has gone up. And I would just like to say briefly that I don't want to talk about failures, but I do believe that the master developer was a total bedoggle the city got into. I mentioned that right here two years ago and it was proved to be true. I hate to say it, but it was true. Now, we can move on and continue to redevelop Joplin like we need to do. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to our other end with Mr. McCreary.
Success is measured in lots of different ways, but I think that we're just now kind of getting ready to see some of our most successful things happen. We've seen a lot of success with the properties being filled in with the J-Happ program where we spent almost $20 million. Mercy Park is going to be a phenomenal park. It's going to be done in a few months, hopefully in a few months. There's The Early Childhood Development Center has broke ground. The library has broke ground. The senior center is out for bids. Street improvements on Twentieth Street and Main Street, things that aren't city-involved, the high school, Mercy Hospital, this North End Zone building, Freeman. I mean, there's just so many great things going on in Joplin right now, that I think it's, I think it's a very exciting time to be here. So, you know, I don't think there's any reason to dwell on any failures. Most of us know what, you know, some of the bigger ones are, and my time's up, so that's perfect.
Mr. Brown?
Well, Dan just listed off all the successes. Thanks, let me borrow yours. Here is who I want to applaud. I want to applaud Sam Anselm, our current city manager. I've gotten to sit with Sam and hear how he wants to have a very firm, thoughtful plan in place before we start spending lots more money. I think he deserves credit for that. We do have new businesses coming. We have seen redevelopment, and I'm proud of Joplin for that. As far as failures go, I echo Dan and Mr. Pryor. I don't want to live in the past and dwell on failures. I want to look towards the future. Now, the audit was a painful process, but a gift. We can see exactly what we need to work on and what we need to improve, and let's just follow the system that's been laid out for us. And as long as we do that, I don't think we stumble back into the same old failures.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin?
This goes back to what I was talking about earlier. I'm extremely proud of Joplin. I always have been. I've always loved Joplin. After the tornado, everybody got together and put this town back together, and there wasn't a lot of time, I don't think, to sit around. I mean, if we could sit around and talk about things forever, and maybe we could have rebuilt Joplin in thirty years, but instead, people got out there and took care of business. Were there mistakes made? Yes, there probably were. I don't think there was anything malicious, so I don't really, I wouldn't call them failures. I would just say that everybody worked together, and now Joplin is a model for disaster recovery in this country. My wife showed up back there in the back, I see. I thought the kids were going to heckle me a little bit, but they're not. But my wife manages the 911 Center for Joplin, and they're also, their cities around the country call them, or they were calling them all the time, saying, hey, can you come talk to us about how to do this? You know, it's, there's not a lot of places that have been through what Joplin's been through, and it did an exceptional job of recovery.
Okay. Our next question, I believe, Mr. Blanchard, you're going to have five candidates, the five seeking the four-year terms, seats, correct?
Okay. Many of you have mentioned the budget, and the budget restrictions is what this question is about, the budget restrictions that are facing the city. Would you be in favor of raising city fees, putting forward tax increases on the ballot, or would you propose cutting spending on existing programs to address the financial challenges currently facing the city?
And Mr. Pryor, I'll let you begin with this one.
That's the one to start me off with. That's a very good question. You know, I think there's several different revenue streams for the city. I think all, you know, it all needs to be looked at. You know, I would be, you know, possibly in favor of cutting a few things here and there. I would be, depending on what it is, what department, you know, where, but, you know, I'm not as fluent as, you know, on the budget, you know, not being on council currently, but I would like to explore that, you know? Is there some opportunity to make things better? Yes, I think there is.
Mr. West?
Thank you. I believe we need to continue looking at our budget carefully. I'm not in favor of adding more taxes on the citizens of Joplin. And for us cutting something, there's two services you do not cut, and one of them is police, and another is fire, because that's your most important service in the city. If you're going to cut something somewhere, we can look around somewhere else. But for putting more taxes on the citizens, I would not be in favor of that. I would not be in favor of cutting any services until we make sure that we've exhausted all our revenues, make sure that everything is right, because Joplin is a good place, and we don't want to lose anything. Thank you.
Once again, this question's for the five candidates seeking the four-year terms, so we will pass Mr. McCurry, but go to Mr. Brown.
Well, I have a hunch that it isn't that black and white. I could be wrong. I believe there's a couple ways we can skin this cat, but I do agree that one of our biggest concerns is the budget. We have a city staff that hasn't gotten raises. The fire department, I was able to hear from them, the situation that they are in, needing more, needing better salaries. So obviously, we need more revenue. I would be willing to make cuts in where we spend, absolutely. But we also have vacant buildings all around our city that we can possibly tap into historic preservation and give tax abatements, tax credits, and generate some revenue through those buildings. We have a hotel motel tax that is lower than anywhere else in the country, just about. I would be willing to look at these areas, because we need to do whatever we can do to generate more revenue.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin?
I think we need to look at all the options. I wouldn't take anything off the table. There are taxes out there that could be looked at, internet taxes and different things that I don't think are being applied, or maybe even can be right now. But the city has started their priority-based budgeting, which really is just budgeting. If you're doing budgeting correctly, it's based on priorities. So I think that that's a really good start to this. They're going to look at all the different programs, or we're going to look at all the different programs, see what we need, see what needs to be tweaked, or what we need to do, and go from there. So I think there's certainly things that can be improved, or other things that could be looked at, so I wouldn't take anything off the table.
And Mr. Hutchinson?
That was an excellent question, though. I have to say. Well, in every organization, it's always a question of money. You never have enough, you never have the wiggle room, and Joplin's no different than any of the rest of them. It is great that the city managers developed this priority base. That's one of the big problems we had after the storm. We didn't know exactly how much money we had, but with this new system in place, I think we'll have a better handle on it, and that's what a budget tells you. It's a blueprint to tell you where you're coming, where you're going, what you have or what you don't have. And I'm sitting on that capital tax board, and I know we just renewed it for the second time. That means three hitches. I don't think the citizens are going to stand for it again, so we need to get the best out of that we can. Now, the real problem is, we don't have the tax base we used to, because people don't shop here like they used to. That's what we depend on other people to come in and pay sales tax. What we've got to do is bring more industry in. We need to support the economic development that Mr. O'Brien's doing through all the groups, and we do that through the parks and rec, through the infrastructure, and maybe some real civic-minded groups like the Connect the Culture. But we've got to bring more industry in, more jobs. There's a meeting, I think, Friday, to show off the new training facility, and that's one of the things, we either got to train our own people better to get the jobs that are here, or in fact, foster a way to bring more industry in with additional jobs. Either way, we need more people here working, making more money.
Thank you. Susan, I believe you have the next question, and it's the same thing, the five candidates for the four-year terms.
Yes. Based on the previous discussion, how would you propose the city fund wage increases for city employees?
And I'll start at this end, Mr. West, and we'll move the other direction.
Well, that's a good question, and that's one of the things that I've been hitting the table on pretty hard. I find it very distressing that our city employees has not had a raise in over three years. So we've got to look at that budget carefully and see where it is. There's somewhere in that budget that there's money, we can give these city employees a raise. You've got the best working city employees in this city. They need to be well compensated. I do believe that that needs to be looked at, and that's one of those things that need to be looked at carefully.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes, wage increases, city employees, something that does need to be addressed. Where that money does come from, here again, not into the city budget, but I think, agreed, I think that there can be some money from different avenues and different things that we can look at. As said before, you know, the police and fire departments do need to be looked at. Other city employees as well need to be compensated for their time that they've spent with the city and their jobs that they do, and continue to compensate those people that do good work for the city.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you. Well, yes, that's the biggest problem we've got going right now. As good as this police department is, well-trained and educated as the management is, we're twenty officers short, and you say, well, how do we lose them? Well, we don't pay them enough to start with. We're about ten officers short in the fire department, and I think some of those stations need an extra man on each shift in order just to maintain the safety standards that are set. We've got to get them, and I don't know any other way to do it except to increase their pay. They need more pay, or else we're going to never keep them here or get them here. So we've got to go through these budgets well, find this money, and the best place is the way to do it is just to bring more industry in, and we have a bigger tax base. Then we do have more money to compensate the people and better pay them.
And Mr. Goodwin?
One of the things that I have heard repeatedly is to pay for the city employees, because they have not received a raise, and obviously, the city doesn't operate without their employees. The city does have a great staff, does have a great police department, a great fire department, along with all the other departments. They all do a fabulous job, and we have to find a way to pay them. We have to find a way to increase sales tax so that we can. And if we don't, we're going to continue to lose these people. That's not the top priority for everybody. Money's not the top priority, but you have to be able to live. So I know that the city employees are very concerned about it, and it's something we absolutely have to address.
And Mr. Brown?
I agree with the other candidates. It's one of the bigger issues on the table. If we, if I were to get elected, I would go through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. I would see how we can take care of our staff. One of the firemen just this weekend told me, if you take care of your staff, they'll take care of you. I agree with that. And so I do want to take care of our staff, because just like the other candidates have said, they are some of the finest people I've ever met, and they work really, really hard. I do think priority-based budgeting is going to help us with this. We're going to organize our money and have a master plan for where we are headed. I think we have to look at our budget holistically, though. We have to change our mindset from maintaining Joplin to investing in Joplin. We have to be willing to make some scary decisions to grow our city, or else we're just going to keep on running into the same problems. So yes, I do want to find the money for the staff wherever we can, but I also want to focus a lot of our energy in developing our economy in general.
Thank you. Kristy Spencer has our next question, and we're going to back all six candidates this time, and Mr. McCurry, you will start us off this time.
What remaining issues identified in the state audit of Joplin still need to be addressed by the city council, and how would you prioritize those issues?
Mr. McCurry will begin, and we'll just move down the line from there.
Well, I know the state auditor was back last week. I had scheduled spring break. I stuck around Monday for the city council meeting, and they gave a short notice, a one-week notice, so unfortunately, I missed the state auditor's comments last Tuesday to council, and, you know, there's some things we need to do, there's no doubt about it, but I would also like to say that there's some things that the council has done since the audit. I think it was embarrassing to receive a pour on a state audit. You know, master developer was poor, they're gone. We criticized for council's decisions. The councilman resigned. We didn't have a change order policy. We now have a change order policy. I think we're taking steps in the right direction. We'll continue to do so. I may be the only councilman, I'm not sure if that's the correct statement, that they actually signed the audit, signed the petition for the state audit. It's important to me. I keep a copy close by, and we'll continue to look for ways to improve that rating on the next state audit.
Mr. Brown?
I'm proud of the steps that have been taken towards correcting some of the wrongs with the audit. I think the people, the council, the people involved with that should be applauded for that. What I want to see is clearer accountability and communication between the city and certain entities in town. Let me say very clearly, I am a fan of the Chamber of Commerce. They have done great things for our city, and I applaud them, and I'm rooting for them. With that, I want to have very clear policies in place about how we decide how much money to give to the chamber. I want to see measurable outcomes and a paper trail, and regular checkpoints, so we can know where we're headed and how certain projects are being funded. If we have this transparency and this communication, a lot of these other things are going to fall into place. And again, I wanted to applaud the chamber for the steps I've already seen them take in correcting some of that.
Mr. Goodwin?
When you run an organization the size of Joplin, just like any other large business, you're going to make mistakes. I was glad to see the state audit, but everything that I heard, what I could hear, because that lady talked really low, was, come on, that was funny. Was mostly just mistakes that people had made. We're going to go back, we're going to correct them and go forward, but the thing, the big thing I also heard was communication issues. Again, there were, it seems like a lot of the things that were discussed were just really communication problems. People weren't hearing what was going on. They don't know what's going on, or they don't understand what's going on, so it creates those issues.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Well, it's been a nightmare, and hopefully, that's over. Although this last time when she came back, we still didn't get a great grade. I think we can improve on that, and that's my intention when I get on there, is that we do improve on that. She's got to come and back, just like when you play a football game, you've got to have a referee. Any organization's got to have a check on it, and we're all about it. We've got to be totally transparent, we've got to communicate with each other, and we've got to follow the rules and do the business the way it should be done.
Mr. Pryor?
Yeah, I agree. The audit was hard for the city, I think, and, you know, for the city to have to endure that after the tornado, you know, I agree. There was a lot of things going on, there were mistakes made, you know, I think, you know, there were a lot of employees getting pulled one way or another, you know, do this, do that, and move forward, trying to get things done. Yeah, I think the city needs to be more transparent on a lot of things and open up the lines of communication between departments and things, and what the city has done so far with the audit report and moving forward and making, you know, like Dan said, the change order policies and things like that, and things are going forward, which are very important to continue the audit.
And Mr. West? Your comments, please.
Yes, the audit was a very eye-opening experience. I was here when she gave the audit report, and I think that the city has started to make some corrections, and I believe two or three. I heard any change orders has been looked at and discussed more. And in the finance department, you know, it's, the finance is a major part of this city, and that's one thing that we need to look at and make sure that the attention is given there. If there's need of help in the finance department, we need help in the finance department. I think communication is most important, and I think also, as before, Mr. Brian's out there, and I will say, the chamber does a well job, but we do need accountability of the taxpayers' money, and that's what I'm about. Accountability, the taxpayers' money, to know what's going on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blanchard has a question now for the four-year candidates again, correct?
Okay. How will you, as an individual council member, work to ensure that trust and mutual respect is maintained among the council and with the city staff? So how will you, as an individual council member, work to ensure that trust and mutual respect is maintained among the council and with the city staff?
And I've been told this is for all six candidates, so we'll start in here, and Mr. West, and go back the other direction.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Good question. I think, first of all, most important, the council needs to work together. We can't go splitting off this area, this area, this area. We have to work together. That's the whole concept of being accountable to the people, and that's the main thing that I strive for, is to make sure that we're all on the same page. that I strive for, is to make sure that we're all on the same page, communication with the people, and working with the staff, and doing the things right for, for the citizens, because the citizens deserve that. You know, they elect us to represent them, and therefore, we need to be sure that we are getting them the communication and what's going on, that they need to know what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Pryor. Repeat that question? Their, their question was dealing with how you, as an individual council member, work to ensure that trust and mutual respect is maintained among the council and the city staff.
Yeah, I agree too, that, that the council is, is a, is a one, one body, you know, and to work towards the city staff, you know, and I, I'd be very open to, to anybody coming and discussing any issues, and then bringing them forward to the council and things like that, but I just, I think everybody needs to work together and continue the good relationships and the open communication.
Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you. Another excellent question. Yes, if we're together as a body, first of all, individual councilmen can't go messing around with the other staff members. They don't, they work as a group, and the city manager reports, and he passes it down from there. Breaking that chain of command can be a real problem, and I don't think that's the way. But we do need to have respect, communication, a little more formality amongst each other. It would go a long way. I got a couple questionnaires, I'm sure the other candidates did too, from the police union and fire, about spending time and riding with them or something, and I'm all for that, but I, and I answered them both. I'd love to do things like that, but only with the city manager's blessing and the police chief's blessing, they knew what was going on in that thing. I would never go behind their back to an individual employee of anywhere in the city.
Mr. Brown.
Communication, again, is, is the key here. I, I don't see any reason personally why the council can't sit down together and discuss issues. There should never be personality or, or feelings brought into it necessarily. I mean, everybody can be passionate, but everybody's got to be able to sit down and talk to each other and discuss things and work things out. If you can't do that, you've got a real issue. As far as the city staff goes, I don't know exactly, word for word, what the charter says about talking to city staff, but I, I think it's, would be important for the council to have meetings with city staff and just to discuss things, not to make decisions, just to listen to what they have to say. But again, I don't know if that's something that's even possible under the charter.
Mr. Brown.
This is a world that I'm very used to. I, I have to give evals on a regular basis. I agree with the other candidates that we, we can't really meddle with individual staff members. We have to go through the appropriate chain of command, and I wouldn't, like I said earlier, wouldn't want to micromanage. However, I would love, the city manager now gives weekly reports, and those are very helpful. I'm sure they're helpful for the city council. I would love, in that report, to be included, what is the state of the morale of your staff? Where is the, if the morale is hurting, where's that coming from? What's the source? I would love for city staff to have a way, perhaps digital, where they can fill out evals anonymously about what they're frustrated with, and this is regularly turned into the council, so we can keep our finger on that pulse. I think it is our job to make sure the people who work for the city enjoy working for the city.
And Mr. McCurry.
I think my first meeting was in November, and I can tell you that we do not always agree on the issues. We don't always agree on the votes. And our mayor is sitting here in the audience tonight, and, and I appreciate him, he's patient with us, he allows us time to discuss. At the end of the day, no matter how mad you get, no matter how excited you get, you got one vote. You got one vote out of nine. So you make your vote, you know, with, with your heart, what's, what's best for the citizens of the city of Joplin, and, you know, win or lose, the way you think it should go, you move on. So, and, and I can honestly say, and I'm proud to say this, that since November the first, we've had closed session, we've had open session, we've had serious disagreements. We've all walked out. I think at the end of the day, there's been no hard feelings. I think that there is mutual respect, there is mutual trust, as far as I've seen since November the first, and I'm proud to be able to say that.
Thank you. Well, as we said at the beginning of the program, this is a one-hour show, and our, we've unfortunately run out of time for the questions. I'd like to thank the panelists for providing the questions and working with us this evening. And each candidate now has an opportunity for closing comments. You have 30 seconds to tell the audience, both here and those watching on television, why you would like their vote for city council on April 5th. So this is your chance, your final thoughts for the audience. So I'll start with Mr. McCurry, we'll work our way back this way.
I'm unopposed, so I'll say most of the time for the other guys, but April 5th is the election. I think it was in the opening statements, they, they said, you know, your local elections are important, get out and vote. I would like to thank the sponsors of Tamco, the Joplin Globe, and it's always great to be back on the campus of Missouri Southern State University, and what a great job they've done, done here. And if you get a chance to vote for me on April the 5th, I won't make all the right decisions, but I'll make the best decisions I can for the citizens of Joplin.
Mr. Brown.
I also want to thank our sponsors. Thank you all, thank you moderators, I want to thank the university. Let me just take my last couple seconds to say this. I am 31. I'm younger than a lot of people who run for political office, and that is because I want to fight with every bone in my body against cynicism. I think people my age and even younger can get involved in their city. If you complain about your city, but you don't do anything to bless it and to work for it, then you're just wasting words. Thanks.
Mr. Goodwin.
As I've said several times, I love the city of Joplin. I loved working for the city of Joplin. Most days, I wished I was still there, for that matter. But what I can tell you about me is that, I will be honest, I won't make decisions based on what eight other people think. If they all think it's right, and I think it's wrong for the community for whatever reason, that's the way I'm going to go. I, I'm going to do everything I can to improve the city and listen to the people and, and see what they want and see what we can get done for them.
Mr. Hutchinson.
If you've seen some of my literature, I've always said I'm running based on a platform of truth and integrity. And what does that mean, truth? Everybody can tell the truth. Integrity means having a passion enough, care about enough, and be willing to stand up and do something about it. I'm a businessman, not a career politician, and I, the reason I am running in the first place is I have plenty of hope for the families of this, this community and the people and the youth, and even though it's going to take some realistic business leadership, I believe there's challenges to face, but I believe we can easily do a lot about them. Ask you to vote for me on April 5th.
Mr. Pryor.
Yes, I too, I'd like to thank the sponsors and the moderators, very good, very good content. Having worked in, in Joplin for 25 years and seen small businesses grow, and, and I'd just like to, you know, take the time and, and ask, you know, for, for everybody's vote on, for April 5th, and, you know, and I've been involved with several city civic organizations, you know, and I'd just like to help continue to see Joplin grow and to be part of the city. Thank you.
And Mr. West.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the sponsors also for their, this evening, and Missouri Southern University has used it, love the room. I think my three words says it all, your voice, your vote, honesty, integrity, that's what you have in Jim West. I will tell it like it is. I will hard work hard for you. I'm retired, so I have time, full time, to work with this council, to see what needs to be done, to listen to the people, to act not hastily, but I can say no and ask a question. I think that's what's most important. Thank you. Appreciate your vote.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you who have been watching this evening in the auditorium, as well as on television, and joining us for this candidate connection. Also, once again, thank you to the Joplin Globe for helping coordinate, Tamco for sponsorship. It's an opportunity for you, the voters, to hear from the candidates. Hopefully, you've heard some things tonight, bring up some points. Remember, April 5th is the election. We've had, one other group I want to thank, our students, working behind the scenes who you don't see, who are getting some great hands-on experience bringing this type of programming to you. But remember, April 5th, the election, this program will repeat, so if you tuned in late and said, oh, I missed it, you'll see it numerous times between now and that date on our station, KGCS, and we also have it on our YouTube channel, so if you have internet, you can watch it there. And going back to when we had the school board candidates, that program is also continuing to replay and is also posted on YouTube. So you have a responsibility as a citizen to become informed. We're hopefully giving you those opportunities to become informed about the issues and the candidates on the election in April. So thank you for joining us tonight.